Explain a couple things. Last meeting, I want to apologize, I did have, I was not, basically not here all the way. I had a lot of things going on and we had people speak in the beginning that was based on non-agenda items. So I requested that we prevent that from happening again by having two separate forms to fill. The white one is pertaining to agenda items only. The green one is pertaining to any other public comment. The green one is for anything you guys would like to speak about during public comment at the end, okay? I also prepared a statement that I would like to read. Let's call the meeting to order first. Call the meeting to order at 6:30. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, the Constitution, and the Constitution of our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, roll call. Mr. Choudry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Mr. O'Veigh.
Present.
Ms. Ayash. Ms. Watson. Mr. Major. And I'm present, so we do have a quorum. So, we had technical difficulties today, so the reason that we're using my computer and webcam is because we were-
Short-staffed.
Short-staffed and we were unable to get somebody to come and do it, so it's been resolved. So you're able to watch it online if you need to. It's at the Hentramic Public Schools and it's online. So, the statement I've prepared is: "The past few weeks, we have heard many testimonies from teachers, administration, parents, community members, and other valued district employees. Many are upset and feel unheard. Their feelings are valid and warranted. During times like these, tensions are high and emotions can take over. I, as well, have been guilty of this during the past few weeks. My focus is priority solely to represent the community and speak up for our children and parents. There is never an excuse to allow conversations to turn into argumentative or disrespectful. I believe it is important that we take accountability for our choices of words, accusations, tones, and actions. I want to take this moment to apologize to my fellow board members if I have overspoke, disrespected, disregarded their concerns or perspectives in previous meetings and discussions. As we gather here today, I hope we can be unified in our purpose, which is to ensure our children should receive the best education for their future. We should all have the same goals. The interests of the students and the community. We must redirect our energy towards protecting our kids and ensuring that they receive an education in a way that best serves their future and individual lives. No child will be left behind here at HPS. Moving forward, I would like to ask that everyone stays civil, respectful, understanding, and kind to one another. The Board wants to hear your concerns without interruption. Each individual has a right to speak and voice their concerns without verbal attacks, yelling, or disrespectful comments. Individuals are entitled to their opinions, but we must also stay mindful and respectful of one another. Everyone has the right to stand up for their lifestyles, freedoms, values, beliefs, and personal choices. All citizens in this community should be able to feel safe and live here happily without fear of being mistreated, underrepresented, attacked, judged, or discriminated against for the way they choose to live their lifestyles and raise their children. We are your elected officials and we're here to represent you, all of you, in this very diverse community. The Board of Education will always promote what is the best interest of the students at Hentramic Public Schools." Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Resolution number one, acceptance of agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. O'Veigh.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Hall. Welcome, Ms. Watson. Ms. Watson is present, join. Please note that. "Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education accepts and approves agenda with any additions or deletions. All in favor?"
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstain? None abstain? Alright, board calendar update. So you guys remember we moved our Cow meeting for this month to the 16th? Is everybody still good on that date? Yeah? Our December 14th meeting, our regular board meeting, is that going to be a problem for anybody? Or are you guys all going to be available?
No, we're not going to be available. Are we canceling the-
So for the December 28th meeting, which is our Cow meeting, we have the option if we want to cancel or reschedule. I feel like we should reschedule just so that way we don't miss another meeting. But what are you guys' thoughts and inputs? We can look at our calendar and look at dates that can fit everyone's schedule, so. Wait, let's see, it's the 28th, so if we move it up to the 21st, is that a problem for anybody?
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with 21st.
The 21st is good?
Okay, so we're going to reschedule our December Cow meeting for 6:30 PM
on December 21st instead of December 28th. So please put that in your calendars and we will have it updated on our website, okay? Alright, next up we have board member discussion. Do you guys have anything you would like to say or is there anything important? I have a question. It's regarding our sped department, Mr. Major. What are the updates going on and what are we doing to move forward and provide the staff and community with the resources that are needed to get things done quicker?
Thank you. Good question. For one, we're hiring personnel. We've hired, I believe, three special education parapros, two social workers. We're still looking to expedite that by working with a company named GPS Solutions who will help us seek out sources, ways to fill the remaining positions. Wayne Reese has been very supportive. They've been providing us a high level of support and I appreciate them. They've been here almost every day for the last month or more. They're also offering personnel to support us and I'll be sending out a communication to the whole board and admin and so on and so forth. So that way we can get assessments done, evals, IEDs, et cetera, you know, and catch up with those.
Any questions?
That is no question. I just wanted to thank you for the statement that you- Thank you.
No problem. Thank you, guys.
Good statement.
I appreciate all your hard work and dedication to the students and the staff and the community. You know, as we all know, we're not going to pay millions, you know, hundreds of dollars to do this. We're doing this for the community and for the students.
For free.
Not free, but almost, almost free, basically.
For power.
Alright, so I had another question. So I know we adopted a policy about candy that the state board recommended. I was hoping we could look into that and maybe change our decision just because staff teachers have asked me a bunch of times, you know, like, why aren't they allowed to like give a treat or a prize to the kids if they're doing something in the classroom, which is an activity? And, you know, a kid answers something right, they would like to be able to give them a piece of candy, you know, halal candy or, you know, make sure no allergies, no penis, none of that. And I mean, it was done before, so if we could look into that, I would like to revisit that and maybe adjust it.
I have a idea, a health measure by the county or the state, I can't recall, regarding restrictions on what kids can eat, healthy meals and so on and so forth. And even our food service company has to follow that. So, but I know it sucks to not pass out candy and whatnot, students, but hopefully-
You can't hear it.
I thought it was on.
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So- So, there's restrictions, thank you. There's restrictions due to the health department or the, can't remember the name of it, but our custodial, not custodial company, but our food service company, also with the meals given to students, it's very, it's supposed to be healthy dietary foods and it also applies to the classrooms. So cupcakes, stuff like that, sugary stuff. So they try to encourage giving them, instead of candy, you know, cool tools, pencils, a notebook, crayons, coloring book, you know, in lieu of that, so. But that's something to look into.
Alright, any other discussions from anyone? No, moving on. Do we have any correspondence? No correspondence? Alright. So, student presentations. Are the students in the-
Yeah.
In the boardroom?
In the other boardroom? Let me check. Where's Mr.?
We have student presentations in regards to Environmental Sustainability Committee, Uday Param from Hentramic High School. Alright, maybe they're running late, but we'll move on. And if they do get here, we'll fill them in right away. Consent agenda. Resolution number two, approval of consent agenda items. Do I have a motion? Mr. Choudry? Seconded by Ms. Watson. "Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education approves the following items under the consent agenda." Do we have any discussion? I have one question. Have we done any, you know, any interviews? Outgoing interviews for any of these positions? That's especially the director's positions and other positions? Do we have like-
Yeah, we're looking at applicants. We're getting a good amount of applications. We have to, we're forming the committees. We do want the board to be included as well as parents that are interested in being part of the panel, especially when it's administrative positions. So I'll be sending out more information to the board and the parents.
Have we done any outgoing interviews for anybody as well?
Oh, you mean, oh, you're talking about exit interviews?
Exit interviews, yes.
Well, the only, the person that left, Ms. Harper, Director of People's Services-
And we had Ms. Nkaleisha Lee, so.
Yeah, it was during a time of transition, but we're creating a system of the Google Doc that they will complete a series of questions. So there's no feeling of letting anything back so they can really share what they exit the district, whether it be positive or things we need to work on.
So we don't have any right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a work in progress.
Alright, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Alright, next up we have audience participation. We're gonna, I'm going to set a timer on my phone. You guys get three minutes to address the board. This portion of the agenda is for citizens to address agenda items only. So if you filled out a white sheet, you will be called to the board. The board will listen, take comments, and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. The proceeding officer will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. If you feel, if you feel like you would like to respond to anything that you can answer today, that's up to your discretion.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like I only have one. Alright. Alright, first off we have Joshua Sekula regarding his resignation letter.
You set the timer? And you tell me when you're ready with that?
Hello, guys. I just want to share this with you and basically say thank you for this experience.
Thank you.
I just wanted to share my letter.
Yeah, have a seat. Oh, let me-
I just came to share and read my letter out loud and thank you guys for the past four years. It has truly been an experience and it's truly appreciated. It's truly appreciated. Pardon me if I get emotional because it is a little emotional for me. "To whom it may concern, hello, I am Joshua Sekula. Please accept this letter of resignation on 11/7/2022 and let it serve as a two-week notice with the last day being November 18, 2022. I am a journeyman carpenter and have been employee of the maintenance department for the past four years. It has been my pleasure as a former student, class 2001, to bring almost 20 years of carpentry experience back to the district and use them skills to try to bring the aging buildings of the district into the 21st century. However, it is time for me to move on. There are many reasons for my departure, but the most important is my family. I recently became aware that due to my journeyman status and the nature of my job duties, I will always be required to work afternoons regardless of my seniority. I have three children, two of which are currently school age. My current afternoon schedule provides no time to be there for my children, no time to help them with homework, to read them a bedtime story, or even share an evening dinner so they can tell me about their day. I love being an employee for Hentramic Public Schools. However, I love my family more. Thank you, Hentramic Public Schools, for letting me serve the community. It was an honor. Go Cosmos." If you guys have any questions, I put my personal email on here to contact you.
I just want to thank you for-
Yeah, thank you for your service and dedication for the students. Sorry to see you go and hopefully maybe we can teach you back soon.
I wish you guys all the best. You guys have a lot of work to do.
Right on time, my brother, right on time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright. Next up we have reports to the board. First presentation is going to be regarding the AEDs. We have Ms. Jen Shaya.
Shea.
Shea?
Yeah.
Ms. Jen Shaya.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Shae. I'm the Beaumont Student Heart Check Manager. And so as part of my job, we go out and we help school districts and schools become ready in case of a sudden cardiac emergency on campus. Currently, the state law requires that each school have a cardiac emergency response plan and team. And Melanie and I have been working throughout the last almost year or so to try to get that up and running for each of the Hentramic schools. A part of that has been we've trained 18 teachers in CPR, so there are almost 18 new certified teachers. Beaumont donated three brand-new AEDs because we identified that you had school buildings that had no AED available in case there was a cardiac emergency on that campus. And then more AEDs are being purchased by the school district to help supplement schools that have a larger area that need more than one. I'm going to show a video real quick. It does show a student having a cardiac arrest in a school situation, but it's an important video to kind of have an understanding of why these teams are important. And then I'll go on to a little bit more about the AEDs real quick.
She was playing games that night. I was in a lot of pain, which I was used to because I've been playing in pain the entire season.
You could tell that she was laboring somewhat, but Claire just has the heart of a champion and she's just going to keep fighting.
I was sitting at the scorer's table keeping score for the game and I just heard a loud thud.
I think we just started yelling for help.
Yeah, yelling 911. And you have a feeling of helplessness.
And it was very quickly that there was people there with us, very quickly.
It fell about right here. Starting back in 2006, when our school got the first AED, as part of that training, we would come together and we would have drills unannounced. Because of the code blue drills, there were some things that were just instinctual to me. The AED is literally right outside of those doors. Go grab the AED, bring it back, and get to work.
You really can't describe just the fear you had coming to your mind.
It really looked like they were running a drill. But it was so quickly that people were declared and that they were taking care of her and it was amazing.
She was invincible and so the only thing that would bring her heart back into a viable rhythm was to have a shock. The AED was needed in order to bring her back to life.
Complete joy, save her, revived.
I'm just really thankful and I feel really blessed that this is where I was chosen to go to school at and just really thankful.
We know that God created her and he knew about this moment before it happened and he knew who would be here and what the outcome would be and then what we would be responsible to do going forward to share her story. But we wouldn't let our child participate in a score anywhere at this point if there wasn't an AED machine accessible. And waiting until someone's gone is not a good time.
Thank you for taking time to watch that. So it's really important for schools to have a plan in place and a team available to be able to respond in case of an emergency. Might not be a student, it could be another staff member, a parent that's coming to the school, referee, we have no idea. Already this year, there's been multiple saves in Michigan schools, including one of our AEDs saving a student at Rochester Adams in February. So we really wanted to work on this project so that we can make sure that the whole school is safe. And once that team is created and the drill is done to practice with the mannequin and the AED trainer, you guys can be qualified for a designation called the Heart Safe School Designation through the state. It's good for three years and you get recognized on the state website as being a heart-safe school. So we're going to be working on that over the next year to try to get, you know, the teams ready and just so that we can make sure the Hentramic students and faculty and parents are safer when they enter your buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. For those watching online, please excuse me moving the camera around and being a little off. I do have tremors, so sometimes the camera looked like it fell. I apologize for that. I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
First of all, thank you, Jen, and please give thanks to Beaumont for providing these AEDs. You know, I work in an emergency room and I understand how important it is to learn BLS, basic life skills.
Yeah.
I was wondering if we can expand it to, I'm happy that 18, you said 18 teachers-
Yes.
Are now BLS-certified? If we can teach, you know, the BLS basic course to our students, so in case that teacher is not present, they know how to handle a situation, especially our high school students. It's a good skill to have and is that an option?
There is curriculum for schools that is already in place for ages, our seventh grade through 12th grade. And so I can absolutely talk to you more about that. And there's also curriculum for sports teams where a coach would sit with his team and identify a certain number of students that are going to go get the AED, a certain number of students that are going to wait for EMS, who's going to call 911, who's going to, you know, different things like that. So that empowers the students to be part of the solution. And so, yeah, I'd be happy to talk more about that with you.
Yeah, you can connect with Mr. Major.
Yes.
And they keep us updated on that. That would be great to happen. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you for the partnership.
Okay, and then just to know, I don't want to take more of your time because I may have a busy day, but an AED can be used by anybody. You literally open up the case and it completely tells you what to do. The pictures tell you exactly where to place the stickers and it runs through everything for you. So nobody should feel worried about grabbing an AED and using it in the case of an emergency.
Yeah, it literally has a voice that's telling you exact steps. Here's what you're going to do now and then it's going to tell you to back off the patient when it needs to be shocked. It's really, you know, thank you for bringing this to our district.
Yes, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Next up we have a presentation to the Hentramic SEES program. I believe Sarah and Liz were not available to make it.
I'm Sarah. I'm here, no problem.
Oh, okay, they're here.
A little bit of a surprise guest, I suppose, yeah. Good evening, my name is Sarah Passler. I am the social worker with Children's Hospital and I work at the Hentramic School-Based Health Center right in the high school over here. And tonight I'm going to talk to you a little bit about one of the programs we do at the clinic over there, which is called Hentramic SEES. And the objective of Hentramic SEES is to provide Hentramic Public School students with free eyeglasses and eye exams. We've been up and running for about six years now. We have money cemented, I think for the next two years for sure, and have every confidence that we can keep this program going as it is. Since the beginning of 2022, our budget year for SEES this time around is a yearly, not a school year kind of thing. So for 2022, I have 158 students that received eyeglasses so far and another 123 that were screened in schools. So what I do is I typically use health department data and I identify kids that maybe failed a vision screening and then from there I can send them permission slips home and stuff like that. So we have two options. One option is for the parents to schedule the appointment and transport their child to Pearl Vision, which is right on Joseph Campo, really close and accessible to everybody. Or we do have the option now, Mr. Nagy told me about the school van, so we tapped into that with Liz and the school community facilitator and we've been able to utilize the school van to transport some students where parents aren't able to. So what that does is it saves us an additional amount of dollars because I budgeted for transportation. We used to use a cab, so I can buy more glasses for more students because we're using that van. It's been a really good thing for that. Also, another thing that we're doing that's new with the program is because since COVID, the health department screenings are no longer done the way they used to be. They used to be kindergarten, first grade, third grade, fifth grade, and seventh grade. They blanket screen the entire grade just to identify the kids that may or may not need eyeglasses. And you can imagine if you're a child and you need eyeglasses, I can't tell you how many kids I bring that have really strong prescriptions and had no idea that the rest of the world didn't see that way. You know, I mean, they're young, they were born like that, they have no idea and they think everybody stays that way. What's the difference to them? So that's been really astounding. So, anyway, what we've done is the health department has limited resources. Again, everybody's dealing with staffing issues and stuff like that, so now they're only doing kindergarten, first grade. So we went ahead with the SEES money and we purchased this machine called a TITMS, which is like a box screener. You could just do, the idea is that I can do a bunch of kids really easy. And I'm going to be starting Monday at Holbrook and my goal is to quickly do the entire fifth grade. Those kids haven't been screened, they were COVID kids, you know, all that kind of stuff. So we're going to make sure any of those kids need glasses. After fifth grade, I'm going to jump up to seventh grade and try to do those. Again, it's with the idea of identifying those kids that may need glasses that aren't getting them and we're starting from there. I think that's pretty much everything. I do have a little bit of news, good news, I'd like to share about the clinic itself. Many of you may be aware we've been running without a nurse practitioner for a while. Thankfully, Dr. Harsoni, who's our medical director from Children's Hospital, has been covering extra shifts and making sure we're seeing as many kids as possible. But we did have a really good interview and we're offering a position to a candidate who has six years' experience in a school-based health center for St. John's. We're very excited about it. So hopefully we'll be up and full-staffed and running very soon. Do you have any questions or anything?
Yeah, I have questions, of course.
Yeah, great.
First of all, thank you for this program and for providing this to the families and students because it is essential to be able to see.
Yes, pretty basic, yeah.
You know, makes you, you know, your grades improve, everything, especially when they sit in the back. I believe, I don't know if it was called the SEES program when I went to school, this was actually offered back in the day in the 1994 era.
Yeah, so they used to have, and I was involved in it, they used to have a program called the Vision Van.
Yes.
And the Vision Van was run through LensCrafters' parent company, Luxatica. And eventually what they were doing is they were taking little kids, you know, to LensCrafters stores and then it turned into a big international thing. And when I first started doing this work, I would take, you know, 100 kids on school buses and we would go for a field trip and they would have an industrial park and they would see thousands of kids a day and the kids would all get glasses in one day. Then they stopped that program. And when they stopped that program, I was still doing 100 and some kids a year getting eyeglasses here and I saw the need. And it just kind of worked out that there was money for vision care and stuff like that, so we created our own and that's what we did. And that's where Hentramic SEES came from.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We really appreciate your dedication and hard work over all these years. Thank you so much.
Sure.
You guys have any questions or comments?
No, but I think the high school's-
Oh, okay. So we're going to take one step back. Mr. Major, can you go grab them? Our president's in the corner, I think she's outside.
Nice.
Thank you very much for your service. Hi.
Alright, so welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You can go ahead and start, introduce yourself to us and what's-
I'm William Albrecht. I'm a science teacher at the high school. And this is Uday Param. He is a 10th grader at the- He is a 10th grader at the high school. And three weeks ago, we started a conversation about a sustainability committee, and I pitched the idea to Uday and said, hey, you know what? I think that all of us want to do right by the environment at the high school, maybe you should think about how we could do it. And so Uday, on his own volition, ran off and created a very extensive set of slides, and he would like to present them to you. So, Uday?
Yeah, I have a slide. I'd love to share it on the screen.
Sure. Joanne, will you be able to do that?
Uh, sure.
We have it on a laptop.
Is it on a USB?
No.
It's your computer?
It's on my computer.
Are you connected to the Wi-Fi here?
Yeah, I'll get my computer. I think we can try to pull up on yours and then share it on my computer.
If you connect to our Wi-Fi, if you want to come here, we'll do it for you. I think you can mirror, becast it to here.
Or I'd prefer sharing it with someone and then...
Yeah, if you, if you share it with...
Email it to meeting@hamtramckschools.org, it'll come up on the screen.
Okay, can you do that? Email it to meetings@hamtramck.
Email it to meeting@hamtramckschools.org.
Meeting or meetings?
Meeting.
No, it's okay.
Okay. And this, I'd like to just share with you, so I'll pass my computer around. This is a short slide deck that I created of the field trips that the Hamtramck High School students have been able to take since the beginning of the year. Most of them have labels, so just enjoy looking at them, please. And a big thank you from all of us in the Science Department for the support that you give our kids. Most of them have labels there.
What's up there?
Sometimes it takes a minute.
Right. Took a while for it to open. Yeah, I wonder if we can decast. We can decast from mine.
Are you connected to our Alarda?
Yeah, I am.
You are?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Are you able to cast?
It's not a school computer.
Oh, that's not a school computer? We can decast from mine.
You, it'll be great.
Yeah.
You can do it here?
I believe so, yeah. Let me open the deck. I'll open that. Open that. Okay, oh, you got the, you got the other slide deck. That's great, you're checking out the bear. We ran into raccoon at Belle Isle. And, all right, so slides that you shared with me, what's the name of the slide deck?
HPS and other sustainability.
Okay. Oh, and it'll be shared with me, right?
Yeah.
What'd you call it? Nope, nope, nope. Recent presentation. Which is such a bad... Is your name in it?
Yes. No, no.
Last year's work. Let me go to my remote.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't think to have him put it on.
For those of you walking in, I just want to keep you updated. So right now, after this presentation, we do have two more presentations, and hopefully it won't take up too much time. And then after that, we just got to run through our consent agenda, resolutions, and then we will go to public comment, okay?
Is this the one, is this the edited one? I've had all the access, right?
Yep.
Okay. Five, six, L, V, and R. Just so that we know, this is the final doc, the one that you wanted presented?
Yep, I just have it.
All right. Okay, take it away. Oh, yeah, but you want to control it with mine.
So as we can all see, there is a nice question. How, how I can, can you help make schools environmentally sustainable? I want all of you to think about this question for a sec, and we will be getting back to this question at the very end of my slide.
You can pull the mic closer to you.
So I want all of you guys to think about this question, and we will be getting back to this question at the very end of my slide. So who am I? I'm late, I go to a serious school where not everyone is concerned about environmental sustainability or environment, and I'm helping. Will you guys help me? See, so how am I helping? I'm forming an environmental sustainability committee. So what's going to be my purpose? To meet the needs of present without compromising the needs of the future generations. So, and environmental sustainability committee is not all about coal, non-renewable resources, it also includes conserving life on land and water and consumption of production and achieving people's good health. And do you guys know the city of Hamtramck has a master plan, which also focuses on environmental sustainability? Cool, right? So these are our main goals. We'll be focusing on all this, but we'll be implementing new goals as we go through. And first goal, raising public awareness, very important. If the people in the community are concerned about environment or if they know more about environmental sustainability, we can actually see a greener and healthier community. It's true. I mean, when people are concerned that we don't need to waste these energies or we don't need to waste the electricity, then the coal, the demand of coal will decrease, no more coal should be produced, no more carbon dioxide will be released from their masks, right? And Hamtramck has a population of 28,000 as of July 2021, and our goal will be to make this population concerned and aware of the bad effects of misusing natural non-renewable energies. In products of saving life on land, it is very important. What do I mean by saving life on land? What grows on land? Trees. We need to conserve the life of, life of the trees, we need to protect the trees, we need to help them grow instead of killing them or cutting them off. Importance of waste management. And here, our Hamtramck High School students are doing a great job by recycling cardboard, papers, and importance of saving the environment. And we also need to make a concern about the bad health effects that people suffer from an unsustainable or polluted environment. And expansion of our committee. And this committee would be totally led by students with the collaboration of teachers. And this committee would be expected to spread to all other HPS students within a month of its formation. So how are we going to collaborate with all HPS schools? So there will be seven different groups of school students from seven different HPS schools, and they will be collaborating with a single group of Hamtramck High School students. And those Hamtramck High School students will be working with HPS teachers, principals, assistant principals, or any staff member who want to help. We would love to see all the board members and all of you guys. Yeah, we'd love to see all of you supporting us, supporting the Hamtramck Public School Environmental Sustainability Committee. We would love to see all of you there. And making our school environmentally sustainable. The average cost of electricity per square foot is 0.67 and $0.19 on natural gas. Okay, we have DTE here, so I'm not sure what's going on now. And average thousand students recur 173,730 square feet, and HPS pays $257,124 annually. These are all my calculations, so this could be approximate, and this is research of ours, so I'm not sure. And HPS pays $20,677 annually for natural gas, in case they use natural gas. So, and HPS pays $3.5 million annually, which is 8.52% of the total grant fund budget. And for this kind of tax, utility bills, operations and maintenance, and, and some securities. And when we get, when we decrease the value of the utility bills, we can actually decrease the value, 8.52% over there. And, and when we decrease the value, 8.52%, we can actually invest that money in, for students, teachers, and different things. And there are a lot of maintenance works going on in schools all the time. But are these works, maintenance works, environmentally sustainable? Well, that's a question for all of you, and me per se, I'm not sure about this question. So we try to bring a significant change in annual utility bills, as well as we go for changes, making these words which are environmentally sustainable. And that's our goal for making our school environmentally sustainable. For, for our first month, we'll be getting new goals as we go through. And next goal, developing environmental literacy among students. It is very important. When a student is environmentally literate, he has the capability to teach, to make his family environmentally literate. When that family is environmentally literate, and that family has the capability to make his friends' community environmentally literate, and that's how we would see it, good change in our community, right? And we want to be the mother oak tree of, of the school, who teach each subless how to grow like in an environment-friendly way. And we expect to reach out to all HPS students and develop environmental literacy among the students. They will give students a chance and learn, and apply them in their daily life. So we need an HPS environmental sustainability committee. It is very important. We need to build this environmental sustainability committee as early as possible because there is not a single good day in the future, climate problems have already started throughout the world, right? Yeah? So I asked you all a question, how can you help make schools environmentally sustainable? I can suggest you the answer. Support us, help us make this committee, and we'll, we'll make it possible. Support us and join us. Feel free to scan the QR code and support HPS Environmental Sustainability Committee. Remember, we don't have a planet B. If we don't care about our, our health, there will be no one else to take care of our health, right? So this is not a red room, I guess, but we can scan the QR code. Thank you.
Before you leave, let me just flip the camera around. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and initiating it. Very, it's a very important topic, you know, and you, you did a great job presenting and informing us about this. Let us know what you need from us in order to make this happen, you know? Please communicate directly with Mr. Najee, and he will keep us updated, and we'll see whatever you guys need to make this successful and see how we can go about that, okay? And once again, thank you for taking the initiative and thank you for mentoring them. I appreciate it. And anybody else, any comments, or Mr. Najee wants to say something?
They've been communicating for sure, they persist them. And making sure to grow the program.
Microphone. Microphone, please, microphone. Free scholarship, free scholarship, that's what we need.
Not bad, I did, but thank you both and the rest of your, your team. I know that they're not all here, but thank you for always reaching out for the needs and so on and so forth, and we're here to support myself and the board and administrators, teachers, everyone. Thank you for what you do.
And everybody in Michigan, too.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving forward, we're going to our next presentation. It's the discussion of rebids and district projects from Pam and Mike. For everybody in the audience, in the crowd, especially the people in the back, can we please maintain quietness so that the presentation is heard and everybody has their opportunity to speak without being interrupted? That would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
You got power? Power?
Yes.
You can hear us?
Yes.
All right. Thanks for having us. Mike Malone and Pam Eldrick in here with Partners. Perfect. We'll try not to take up too much time, we've got a lot, lots to talk about today, so. The first, the first item we'd like to discuss is the ECE projects. We have two projects there, one of them being the mechanical upgrades and the other one being the window replacement. If the board can...
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. Can somebody please tell the crowd in the back to remain quiet? Thank you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. If the board recalls, we, we had a big initiative to kind of address mechanical systems in all the buildings, as well as a lot of the aging windows and so forth. So this is really the second phase of work. We've got the first phase of work under contract already. That involves Horizon, Tau Beta Community Center, and I think a little bit of this building. So this is really Phase Two, it's the ECE. So we did receive bids. When did we get the bids? Sorry. Yeah, we got bids in, in early October, and we've reviewed those bids. We actually got one bid for the mechanical upgrades and two bids for the windows. And it just turns out that the mechanical contractor is actually the same contractor that you have under contract for Phase One, which is a good thing. We're comfortable with their abilities, and we recommend moving forward with that project. And there is, I believe you have a recommendation letter in your packet for the award of that. And in conjunction with that, there's a separate contract for the window replacement, and that's with Spartan. Spartan Construction Group, it's a separate letter. So we recommend moving forward with both of those projects. And then in addition to that, we provided a two-page summary in your packet of other projects, right? We're closing out Community Center wall replacement project, you know, there's a few minor punch list items there, and other things that we are working on, like Holbrook is really the next project, and we've outlined the schedules and so forth. So we don't want to go into all the detail, but is there, is there anything you want us to cover or answer or clarify?
Did we not already approve bids for these projects in October?
No, well, we did not approve those. We needed a little extra time to review the numbers and meet with them, but no, this is the first time you're seeing it.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Holbrook is being lined up and scheduled yet?
Holbrook, we're, we're looking to release our bid package in January, so, you know, that's the kitchen, that's the mechanical, the windows there as well. So that's kind of like three different items, but...
Okay, I mean, the board has the packet they can review. If we have any other questions, we'll be reaching out to you. But at this time, does anybody else have any other questions? If you have additional packets, we, we're missing a couple for the board meeting.
Missing a pack. Do you have one?
Thank you for coming. Do you have anything else we'd like to...
Well, I, I think we need board action on, on those two contracts, so awarding the contract to Miller Bolt for the mechanical work and awarding the contract for Spartan. for Spartan Construction Group for the windows.
Okay, we, uh, we do have them on our resolution and when it comes to that point, uh, we'll have some discussion and, and go forward from there. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Watson has a question.
Do you have a revised date for completion of the community center?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a revised date for, uh, completion of that work on the community center?
Um, the community center is pretty much done. We have timed little items.
So, do we have like a firm date for when we expect it to be completed? Is that this month? Is that by the end of the year? Is that?
Well, we're, we're waiting on the contractor to, you know, there's a punch list and items that were, need to be corrected. So, he's trying to line up his sub-trades. Uh, we don't have firm dates. I mean, we typically give him thirty days to complete and it's been at least that, right?
It, it's probably pretty close on the punch list items, but I believe there's only two items left that need to be completed off of that. Everything else is done.
So, it'll be done by the end of the year?
I hope by the end of the month.
Okay, that's better than the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, the little thesis for the plant. Is there any way you guys can cover it up with us? Some kids are using a trash can.
Okay, so I have been with Rich on that, um, aspect and we are looking to get some garbage cans also, some trash cans, um, match the, what we have out there, some concrete so we can make sure that they're gonna stay there. So, once we get all of that in place, then we are going to cover them for the winter time. We were hoping to do some planting before, but, um, as things kept progressing, I didn't want to try to grow something in such a short amount of time. So, yes, we, I will talk with him, make sure we get them all covered up over the, uh, winter time here.
Any other questions? All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, our final report is gonna be from Yo and Yo for our audit report for 2021 through 2022. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
All right. I'm Brian Dixon from Yo and Yo and I'm the partner on your audit engagement. In front of you, you do have a copy of the audit report, the single audit report and the governance letter. Uh, we are gonna focus on, on the slides that are up on the screen. But if we do have questions and need to go into those audit reports, we definitely can. Yep, just slideshow at the top. And then start slideshow. Start from the beginning. Yep. Right there. There you go. So, if we go to the next slide, we have the audit process. The audit process really consists of three parts. We look at your financial statements, which are the numbers and verify that those are, and provide reasonable assurance on those. We look at your internal controls, which are the safe parts of the district's assets, you know, which are centered around financial reporting. Then we look at compliance with federal, state, local laws and regulations. When we look at your financial statements, we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, and the financial statements were fairly presented. We go to the next slide and it's really small on this screen. There we go. So, here we have the balance sheet of your governmental funds. We have your general fund, which is your major fund, and then we have your non-major governmental fund aggregated in one column, and that's your food service fund, your recreation fund, your student activities fund, as well as your sinking fund. In the general fund, we have assets at the end of the year of twenty-three point six million dollars, liabilities of nine, nine point two million. We have deferred inflows or report, resources of three hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and fund balance at the end of the year of just under four, just over fourteen million dollars. The non-major governmental fund, assets three point seven million, liabilities three hundred and thirty-six thousand, and fund balance at the end of the year of just under three point four million dollars. We go on to the next slide. This is your statement of revenues, expenditures, expenditures and changes in fund balance. Again, broken down between the general fund and your non-major governmental funds, again, your food service, recreation, student activities and sinking fund. Revenues in the general fund this year of forty-seven point five million dollars, expenditures of fifty point four million dollars, or increase this year in your fund balance of two point eight million dollars in the general fund. But there was some timing of some of the grants that you received this year of four point two million dollars of those Esser funds. So, your Esser two grant, even though you did spend four point two million dollars of those funds during the, the school year, you were unable to receive those funds until after the school year because that, that grant was not approved until August. So, then in your non-major governmental, so that would bring you to a, a positive bottom line this year, if those funds were in there, of one point four million dollars. Your non-major governmental funds, four point eight million dollars of revenues and four point seven million dollars of expenses are, basically break even or an increase of thirty-three thousand dollars this year in your non-major governmental funds. On the next slide, we'll focus on the general fund compared to budget. So, we have your original, final budget and actual. Final budget, well, an increase of seven hundred and six thousand dollars in your general fund. Actual was the, the negative two point eight million. But again, with the four point two million dollars of Esser funds that will be a revenue to you next year, that would have been an increase of about one point three million dollars. So, if you compare yourself to, um, the actual compared to budget, your budget was about ninety-four percent for revenues and it, that was under budget by two point nine million dollars. And then your expenditures, pretty much right on, ninety-eight point seven percent are just over by six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, pretty, pretty good in your budgeting practice for your expenditures. Then we have a pie chart of how those revenues are received. Again, forty-seven point five million dollars in total revenues, broken down between inter-district, federal, other, local and state. If you have the state and local together, seventy-six percent of your funds are coming from property taxes and state or based on your student, or fixed based on your student counts. Uh, all these pieces of the pie very consistent with last year within a couple percentage points. So, receiving your, seeing your funds, um, similar to last year. On the next slide, we do the same thing with your expenditures. And this year, your expenditures were fifty point four million dollars in total expenditures. Last year was only forty-three point eight million dollars. So, a big increase in expenditures this year. And obviously, spending those Esser dollars or that, those federal dollars that you received, um, this year of four point two million dollars plus additional federal funds that you received. So, an increase of six point six million dollars in your expenditures this year. So, lots of differences here, uh, but this pie is broken down between salaries, employee benefits, purchase services, supplies, materials and then capital of the other. Then we take those revenues and expenditures and divide them by your pupil counts. And we'll show you the pupil counts on the next page. But you will see here that on this chart, over the last five years, you know, good upward trend in revenues and expenses for the district. Goals always to keep that green line above the blue line or very close to each other. If you would have, have had the Esser dollars of that four point two million dollars, um, if that would have gotten approved, you would have had sixteen, sixteen thousand six hundred dollars basically of revenues per pupil. So, it would have been above that blue line. Um, but as of the end of the year, you did have a, a decrease in fund balance because you weren't able to record those revenues until you received the grant in August. Here's your enrollment trend over the last ten years. And if you actually look at two thousand seventeen of three thousand one hundred and fourteen compared to now, uh, twenty twenty-two, three thousand one hundred and eighteen. And actually, um, information that's not on the slide, if you go back all the way to two thousand seven, you were at three thousand one hundred and sixteen students. So, uh, some ebbs and flows in your student counts, but you know, pretty much that baseline is right around thirty-one hundred students. Next slide, we look, we focus on your general fund balance and this is our dollar balance, your fund balance. It went from sixteen point eight million dollars last year with that decrease this year, bringing down to just over the fourteen million dollars. Again, if we would have had those Esser funds, this would be sitting at eighteen point two million dollars. And again, just to point out there on that last slide, in twenty fourteen, you know, just eight short years ago, uh, the district was in deficit. So, you guys have done a great job over the last eight years bringing that, the district back to a nice fund balance. Then we take your fund balance and divide it by your expenditures. Again, twenty fourteen, you had a deficit of three point seven five percent all the way up to twenty twenty-two of twenty-seven point eight five percent in fund balance. So, a slight drop this year again, but with those additional four point two million dollars, that would actually make that percentage increase to thirty-six point two. So, it still would have been a drop as a percent of your expenditures because your expenditures grew so much this year versus, uh, the decrease in your, in your fund balance. Or even if you would have had a slight increase in fund balance with that additional, uh, revenue, it still would have dropped over two percent fund balance this year just because of those additional six point six million dollars of expenditures. To compare those to your peers, your peer group is between three thousand and thirty-five hundred students. So, as of twenty twenty-one, because we don't have all the data yet for twenty twenty-two, the audits are just completed. So, as of twenty twenty-one, your peer group is at twenty-two point seven percent and you were sitting at thirty-eight point four six. And the statewide average was at nineteen point two eight. Overall, your peer group last year went up six point three percent and you went from thirty-one to thirty-eight percent. So, very similar to your peer group. You went up just over seven percent fund balance and your peer group went up almost six and a half percent. So, just rate with your, with your peer group. So, those are the numbers. Then we look at your internal controls. So, internal controls, we do a lot of testing and I'm not gonna go over, um, all these testing. Just to let you know that we do do a lot of testing during the course of the audit. Uh, we do unpredictability tests so that management doesn't know what we're looking at. We always come up with a new test each year. Uh, we always bring additional staff members out or new staff team. So, we're always changing up the audit procedures, changing up who's looking at your books and records and making sure that you do get a call the audit. Um, but I know you have a lot on the agenda, so I don't want to go over each and, each of these procedures. But we always look at your disbursements, your seats, payroll, all your journal entries, the bid process. Uh, we look at your sinking fund compliance, make sure you're in compliance with your sinking fund as well. When we looked at all those internal controls and we look at internal controls over financial reporting, we had no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies and no material non-compliance. When we looked at internal controls of your major programs, and this year we did test three major programs, and that was the child nutrition cluster, the emergen, emergency connectivity fund and the education stabilization fund. Those funds added up to about four point four million dollars of federal expenditures. And we had no material weaknesses, no significant efficiencies and no material non-compliance. We tested those three major programs for you. So, you are spending that federal money properly. And then the final item we have here is the governance letter. And this is required communication between the auditor and those charter of governance, which is the board. So, please read through that letter that's in your packet. Uh, some good information for you, some upcoming accounting standards. All those are included in that. And then only one management comment this year, and this is the same comment that I talked to, to you about last year, and it's your food service fund is over the three months of, of expenditures. And obviously, you know, across the state, majority of the districts have this exact same comment because all your students were receiving free meals this year. So, you were adding to fund balance in the, in the food service fund. Uh, so, just follow your plan with MDE in order to spend down those dollars and get back in compliance. Uh, it is not a material weakness or significant deficiency. Only, only made it a management comment. So, thank you very much for allowing me to present tonight. And I'll take any questions.
All right, I have a couple questions. Um, so with your audit, uh, help me understand how does it go? Did you, uh, do any title budget audits this year? Because I know you guys do them every couple of years if, if I'm not mistaken.
That is correct. With, no, these are the three major programs we tested this year.
So, we did not?
No, we do not test additional major programs, um, in this, with the single audit act.
Okay. Cause I did have concerns regarding our title, um,
Yep.
budgets, which I communicated with you.
And I did, I did follow up on those procedures and I, um, was trying to reach you the last couple of weeks and was unable to do so. But I did follow up on those and, um, your big concern of the, um, what's the name of the, the trauma center? The big concern of the trauma center and those funds not being spent. Those funds did not get spent in last year. And we showed, we looked at the title budget to verify those funds were not spent and they did move into your carryover into the, this school year's budget.
So, we were told that we're not in compliance with Title One, Title Two, Title Three and Title Four. Uh, we were told that basically, um, we were not using those funds appropriately or in the way they were meant to be used. Did you guys look into any of that or no?
Yes, we did. So, and with, after discussion with you, I did watch your board meeting where you had your new director.
I recommended.
Yep, yep, you recommended that I watch your board meeting. Um, and I did follow up with that. And, uh, your new director, um, actually mentioned at the board meeting as well. But all those funds were properly spent. They weren't allocated to the correct places. So, um, with the help of Mrs. Lyman and your Title One Director or your Title Director, um, they went through, or Curriculum Director, I believe it is. They went through and, um, looked at all those expenditures, reallocated those to the correct places and made sure that they agreed to the MDE budget. And then you had carryover from there.
Okay. So, as long as the reallocation was appropriately done and everything is within the law.
Yes.
Because we don't want, you know, something to come out of us possibly using any funds the way they're not intended, especially when they're coming from the government.
That is correct.
And I just have one more question. So, pre-audit letter that, um, the board is supposed to receive, who's in charge of giving us that? Because we never received it. And I mean, I've been doing this for a while and that we've never received a pre-audit letter.
We, we provide you with an engagement letter with all the pre-audit information that's supposed to be included in that with a cover letter that is, um, that says, please hand this out to all board members.
Okay, so who's supposed to hand it out, Mr. Najee? Cause we never got it.
That would be-
I mean, I never got it. I don't know. You guys got anything?
That would be whoever's signing your engagement letter, which I believe was the superintendent.
So, we never received the pre-audit letter, just to let you know. So, I mean, so the board, it's kind of clear that they didn't receive it or we didn't receive it just because we didn't have time to prepare it, to ask questions or to, you know, just be informed. So, this is not the first time we don't receive the pre-audit letter. But I mean, I've done my research and, uh, I believe in the last couple of years, we've never received a pre-audit letter handed to us. And so, if that is the responsibility of whoever is signing our, uh, agreement, we would like, moving forward, to make sure that we are getting the pre-audit letter to all, every board member. And I believe this year you guys did it October thirty-first?
The pre-audit letter?
Yeah.
Would have been in December, or in June. June first would have been the pre-audit letter.
Okay. We did not receive-
The audit was dated October thirty-first.
Okay, the first time we received the pre-audit letter, uh, I believe was yesterday when we got an email, when, cause I did send an email asking why we've never received that. And, uh, it was attached in our email yesterday, which gave us zero, you know, no time to review anything.
I believe that was dated June first of twenty twenty-two.
Uh, we just never got it, so.
I think in the future, what we'll do, um, because of that, is I will actually mail each one of you a pre-audit letter.
Okay.
And that way we can, we can remedy that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the, the rest of the board? No questions? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, moving on to action items. Um, resolution number three, approval of invoices and check register. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Obay.
Second.
Second by Tom. Resolve that the check register for the period of October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two through November ninth, twenty twenty-two, as enclosed, be approved. All in favor? Do we have any discussions first? Any? No discussions? All right. Any? No discussions? All right. All approve?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Resolution number four, approval of purchases. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Sure, Mr. Shaudri. Seconded by Ms. Watson. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the purchase of an N E W S E L 8 annual subscription for all schools, total amount not to exceed $50,239, funding through S R 3 learning laws. Any discussion? I just have I have a question. What exactly is it? So what are we actually subscribing for? Is this something new that we're adding to the curriculum? Or is this something that's already, it's part of the curriculum? This is brand new?
No, it's not brand new.
Is it brand new? Okay. I mean, just as long as we know we're not continuing to change the curriculum, which is another concern, I have no other questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
They're already using it. They're already using it, right?
Yes, that's what we're told. Okay.
Can you use the microphone? Can't hear you.
Can you grab?
I don't think I can hear what you said.
I know, because we don't have adequate a microphone.
I said, are they already using it?
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Resolution number five, approval of overnight field trip. Do I have a motion? Mr. Obay.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Hall. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the request of William Alverch to take 10 to 20 students along with at least one other chaperone to scout Palo Rouge Park for an overnight camping trip, November 11th through the 13th, 2022. Do we have any discussion?
Where exactly is that at?
Is it in Michigan?
Yeah, Rouge Park is like west side of Michigan.
Rouge Park, Rouge Park?
And this is their second time.
Yeah.
They share it all.
Just as long as you guys have all the medical equipment, you know, with the staff and you know everybody's medical history in case of an emergency, the students wise, and if they are needed, if they have any medication that they have with them. Also, we'd like to see more than just one other chaperone if it does get up to 20 students, you know, because watching 10 students each is kind of excessive. So, you know, if it's 20 students, you know, you should have a minimum of four chaperones. Any other questions or concerns?
Are we buzzing then? Or they?
Yeah, I can answer any questions. Yeah, I started to get back. We actually now have five chaperones on board and our list is probably 17 students tops. It could, it'll, we'll be known by 10 o'clock tomorrow. Bus leaves HHS 1 o'clock or 1:30 on Friday, returns 1 o'clock on Sunday.
Okay, thank you.
Students who want to get home on their own are allowed to if I communicate with their parents. If they only want to be one day, that's possible. So that's, those are the other details that you don't know.
Thank you for providing our students that opportunity. I mean, we really like seeing them being able to explore things and be out there in the world and seeing different things. So thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Resolution number six, this resolution was on the last agenda, it's a resolution regarding the YouTube videos. So do I have a motion? Motion, motion by Mr. Obay. Seconded by Ms. Hall. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby mandate that all recorded board meetings from January 1st, 2022 and moving forward that are posted on YouTube are to stay on YouTube indefinitely and are not to be deleted or set to private. Do we have any discussion?
The ones that you take or in public?
The ones that we are reporting.
Okay, that's even better.
So the reason for the January 1st date is out of respect to another board member. If anybody needs videos that were posted or set to private prior to that date, you will have to go through a FOIA, which is okay. But yes, so we're going to start it starting this year, moving forward indefinitely, just so there's no confusion about. And also, can we have our YouTube page changed to a public school district page and not one under one person individually? So right now currently, it's under Mark's personal. It's under his personal account. So if Mark leaves, I don't know what happens with those videos. So if we can transition and move all the videos onto a district YouTube site, that's that would be appreciated and needs to be done sooner rather than later.
Did you mean one account or not as private? I think just he's the sole.
He is the sole. It's his personal account. It's his personal account. It's not a public, it's not a district account. We need to make sure that any kind of media we have has a public school account versus anybody using their individual account. So if there's a way to
Yeah, why don't you do it as a district account?
That's what I'm saying. We need to make it as a district account and have those videos transferred if possible. So that's just my comments on that. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes. I got a question real quick. Should we have added that to the motion, Joanne? That to create district accounts for media or can we add that in the future? So, all right, can we amend it to after it says end or set to private? Any media websites or accounts should be district owned? And controlled by
Who would control it?
Design staff, yeah. Designated staff.
Designated staff.
And will be, yes, and will be managed by designated staff. All right, so we are so, Joanne, how do we go about this? Do we say we amended it and re-vote? Yes, since, okay, so resolution number six has been amended. It's a resolution regarding YouTube videos. Do I have a motion?
Motion again.
Motion by Mr. Obay.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Hall. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby mandate that all recorded board meetings from January 1st through the 2022 and moving forward that are posted on YouTube, stay on YouTube indefinitely and are not to be deleted and or set to private. Any media websites or accounts pertaining to the schools should be district owned and designated to and should be designated to the appropriate staff to maintain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, all right, motion passes. Resolution number seven, awarding of bid. Do I have a motion?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Hall.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Watson. Resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education does hereby award a bid for the early childhood elementary window replacement project to Spartan Constructions Group, Inc., in an amount of $948,000 with a contingency amount of $72,000. All right, so I have, Rich is rich in the building. I have a couple of questions for you. Would you like to join? Hello. So how many bids did we get for this project?
Two bids received on the window project. One was from a merely a glass company bidding on only the panes of glass. And the other was from Spartan, which was the complete bid.
How much was the bid?
The bid for for the the other bid, how much was it for?
No, the other bid was totally incomplete. It was not the whole job. So it was just removed, yes.
So we only had one bid?
Yes.
Will this amount change if we approve this bid due to construction costs or anything? Is there something we should know? Leading to that?
It's it's a pretty solid number. You know, I mean, with going through everything with them, going through everything with partners, we reviewed everything over and over. We're pretty confident in the number.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from the board?
Why is that typical that we would only receive one bid for a project of this scope?
It's just the way of the world right now. There's, I talked to a lot of people in other districts and there's just not a lot of responses to bids going out. There's a lot of construction work going on everywhere and
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stick around though.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. Resolution number eight, awarding of bid. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Hall. Seconded by Mr. Obay. Resolved that upon the recommendations of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education does hereby award the bid for the early childhood elementary HVAC upgrade project to Miller Bolt, Inc., in the amount of $4,185,000 with a contingency of $310,000. All right, so how many bids did we get for that, Rich?
One bid, returned.
Just one bid.
Yes, Miller Bolt.
So just so the community is aware, we are trying to put, provide AC in all our schools. So this is seen, it is a big number, $4 million is a big number. But this consists of basically installing vents and and everything.
It's basically, correct. It'll basically be HVAC, heating and cooling, air conditioning.
How is the bids put on there? Did you put it on the internet?
Yeah, it's put on our
On the internet and the paper, yes.
What's the internet? Can you tell us?
It's called M I I, It for Michigan.
It's the website that they use.
They put it on a school website too.
All right, so yeah, like I was saying, this is the start. We're planning on adding air condition and heat, the appropriate HVAC units to all the schools in the district. So it's going to be a process, but we are working on it. All right, any other comments or questions?
How many classrooms is it?
In ECE? How many classrooms is in ECE?
10.
Offhand.
They worked, they said 10.
About 10.
About 10. Does that include the preschool?
Yes.
Okay.
It's only 82, so preschool.
Through the second grade, okay.
Maybe 12.
10 to 12, all right. I mean, and then you got offices. All of that's going to be included in it, right?
Correct.
Even the gym.
The gym.
Yes.
Everything, okay. We don't want to miss nothing if we're paying this much.
No.
All right, any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. All right, resolution number nine. So this is a resolution that we're adding. As you all, first of all, congratulations to Mr. Obay, Abdul Malik, and Victor for winning the election yesterday.
You're welcome.
All right, so with that being said, Mr. Obay has turned in his resignation letter. In order, so since Mr. Obay has ran for a four-year term to fill a vacancy, which Mr. Major is holding right now currently, he has to resign from his seat after the election. And we have to put a motion to basically give him his seat back. Is that correct, Joanne?
No, I get, I'll go to the four-year.
You go to the four-year, yeah.
And then my vacancy
Goes to Evan.
To Evan, if we appoint it as a board to be a
For the remaining month and a half.
Yes.
So for the remaining month and a half, the appointment of board member, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Mr. Obay. Seconded by Ms. Watson. Resolved that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Evan Major to the vacant board seat formerly held by Mr. Obay. This appointment will be until the term expires on the date of December 31st, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. All right, next up. It's going to be audience participation. I know. Before we start, I want to be very clear that we have to be respectful and, you know, we're here to listen to your concerns. You each do get three minutes. Please try to stay. And I'll let you know when your 30 seconds is almost or when your time is up. Please, when your time is up, give others the opportunity.
These are the ones in the bottom.
So it looks like we have quite a bit. So this portion of the agenda is to, for citizens to address any questions or comments to the board. The board will listen, take comments and questions under advisement and not respond at this time. The preceding officer will refer questions to the superintendent for research and response. And as I said earlier, Mr. Najee, if you feel like you can answer or respond to anything that you would like to, it's your discretion, okay?
Thank you.
He has, hold on, Mr. Najee has a statement, if you'd like to read it.
Yeah, a statement prior to, um, Mr. Obay. Yeah, I guess I don't want nobody
I'll tell you guys and I'm not going to reply today.
We never reply to public comment. It's always, it's just how
I guess we don't want to be interrupted by, you know.
Yeah, please, no interruptions. And when somebody's speaking, please respect their time and do not, you know, yell or try to speak over them. We all got to respect each other and, you know, just get through these comments without any arguments, hopefully.
There's quite a few. Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to make a statement. There were some concerns regarding books and so on and so forth. So I'll begin with the statement and we'll, we want Dottie's participation. I wanted to make a statement on behalf of the district. We appreciate the passion and commitment our parents bring to their children's education. Your dedication to their success is essential to their growth and academic achievement. And that commitment is what makes Hamtramck a special community. You are a partner in the education of your child, children, and we appreciate your concerns regarding the educational materials available to our students. Providing the students that we are privileged to serve with a safe and healthy learning environment remains our primary objective. To that end, as mentioned, in the parent letter distributed last Friday, the district conducts a comprehensive review of all materials used for the instruction of our students, following state and federal guidelines and vetting for appropriateness before they are provided to our students. While we are confident in our existing review process, we value the partnership we have developed with our parents and community. As such, we will be introducing a new book review process that would include a committee consisting of parents, educators, and administrators. The committee's role will not be limited to, will not be to limit student access to books. Thank you. But to ensure that books available to our students are appropriate based on education guidelines. More information on the development and selection of the book committee will be provided soon. In the meantime, parents concerned about a book currently available in the district should contact their child's teacher or building leader so that the book can be set aside for review. If the book is determined appropriate by the committee, a parent will have the option to prevent their child from having access to that title.
Mr. Najee? Yes, pause for one second because there's trouble with the
Leg?
The leg, that's what, I heard it's frozen, so I'm trying to reset it. I'm not IT, but I'm doing my best, guys. So apologies in advance.
You made it happen.
All right, I'll let her know. I think it's still lagging, but hopefully it's not frozen.
Hopefully the audio works. All right. Your partnership in education process is fundamental to our success. We will post this statement on our website and social media channels for future reference and encourage residents with questions or concerns to submit them in writing to info@hamtramckpublicschools.org. I will have access to the email as well as the board. We will respond to your queries as soon as possible. As a community, we must work together to create a positive learning environment that is welcoming, inclusive, responsive, and future-focused, that for your continued commitment to our students and the community. And one more thing, so there was a series of books that were shared via WhatsApp.